Councilmember Frencher, as you see, Madam Mayor, we are busy being on the table at all the regional committees. And thank you so much to my colleagues for stepping up to do the hard work. And back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number six on our agenda, which is public hearings. We have three this evening. The first hearing-
Welcome to Kansas City Council Committee of the Hall for Tuesday, November 19. We'll go ahead and get started with the roll call. Kim, maybe have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Council President. Council President Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any changes to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion, please?
Sumo.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Next up, we have approval of minutes for November 5.
Sumo.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay, we have Brian here with two consultant services agreements. Welcome.
Afternoon, Vice President. Councilmembers, Brian Rambunga, PMO Manager with your Information Technology Department. I'm here again, also here to present authorization of two items. An amendment to our consultant services agreement with Robert Half International and the other for a new consultant services agreement with Protingent Incorporated. Amendment number six with Robert Half will allow the city to retain augmented support for maintenance and operations of critical city business systems as well as processes, understanding that this original agreement has gone through numerous iterations or amendments. It's IT's current plan that this amendment is our last under this agreement with Robert Half. The consultant services agreement with Protingent, the second item, will act in the same way, allowing the city to retain existing agency support for operations as well as fill critical roles for approved projects for next biennium. The IT department seeks council approval to enter into these agreements with agencies so long as the costs associated can be paid within budgets established by this council for the 2025-2026 biennial budget in a collective amount not to exceed $1.1 million. I did want to mention, thought that it was important that this collective amount of $1.1 million is decreased from our current biennium of consultant service agency agreement budget, which was or is $2.2 million. So we do continue to make progress in decreasing our need for agency support. That concludes my presentation this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments for Brian? All right, if not, I'll make the first-
Just one quick question.
Councilwoman Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. So you said this is part of a budgeted amount, but it's decreased. So did we budget for that previous amount or did we budget for 1.1?
For the previous amount, we did budget for the 2.2, which is for the 2023-2024 biennium, this biennium. We did submit budget to cover the 1.1 million in this biennial budget season or the next biennial budget season, excuse me, for 2025-2026.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a consultant services agreement with Protingent Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT Director and City Attorney.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll make the second motion as well. I move to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number six to the consultant services agreement with Robert Half International, Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Information Technology Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. All right, next up, we have Michelle with two items. One requires action, consolidating budget adjustment and our financial report. Welcome, Michelle.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Ferguson, the Financial Planning Manager, and I will be presenting the consolidated budget adjustment for October 1st through October 31st of 2024. Okay, so the October adjustments are reflecting an overall budget increase of $21,339,430. Previously approved budget increases that councils approved are $9,355,630, and the increases pending approval from council total $11,983,800. Of the $9.4 million of expenditure increases that council has previously approved, $8.6 million is for grants, which include $4.35 million for the roof property acquisition, $3.3 million is from the Recreation and Conservation Office, which was approved by council in November of 2023, and $1.35 million is from King County and was approved by council in February of 2024. There's also $1.3 million in grants for the Springwood Park development. $500,000 is from the Recreation and Conservation Office and was approved by council in November of 2023, and $800,000 is from King County, which was approved by council in February of 2024. $1.14 million is for the King County Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy Grants. $310,000 is for the 2021-2023 Levy Extension that was approved by council in April, and $830 is for the 30,000 is for the 2024-2026 Levy that was approved by council in September. And then there are $628,000 grant for the Lower Russell Road Levy Habitat Project A and $627,000 grant for the Boeing Rock Habitat Enhancement Projects, which are both from King County Flood Control District and approved by council in October. Then there is $378,000 grant from the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Mendel Property Acquisition, which was approved by council in November of 2023, $100,000 grant for the Lake Meridian Playground Resurfacing Project, which is approved by council in July, a $58,000 grant for Public Defense Services from the Washington Office of Public Defense, which was approved by council in August, and two smaller grants, an $18,000 grant for the Fore Culture and a $4,000 grant from the Western States Art Federation. And then there are $750,000 in other changes that council have approved, which includes $624,000 in the Affordable Housing Sales Tax Fund for the use of $501,000 for a consultant services agreement with the Salvation Army, which was approved by council in August, as well as $123,000 service contract with Kent Youth and Family Services, which was approved by council in July. And then lastly, there's $127,000 in changes in the City Arts Plan, which was approved by council in March. The remainder of the almost $12 million in changes that council has not seen in this amendment include $10.8 million for ARPA adjustments. So there is a number of adjustments that are needed for all the different ARPA projects going on to make sure all of these projects are budgeted and funded by the end of this year. We have until the end of 2024 to make sure that everything is obligated and the end of 2026 to make sure it's spent. So the reason this number is so high is kind of because of that double budgeting, we're moving the money from the project to the general fund and then from the general fund to these projects. So the bigger shifts are going to be $6.25 million for Quahog Projects, and that includes $5.7 million for the steel for the building for Quahog, as well as $543,000 for PSE to provide power to the site. And council has approved both of those, but we just wanted to put these all together in one. So there's also $1.3 million in changes for parks, which includes funding for the Springwood Park, the Coannis Todd Lot, and Kearsan Park. Then there's some reductions as well to kind of pay for these other things. So there was a $930,000 reduction in facilities projects, which included the customer service counter improvements that came in way under budget, as well as the council office move, which is no longer needed. And then there was $900,000 reduction for the military veterans drive projects. The scope was reduced and that money was then used for the Quahog projects. So the remainder of changes that council has not yet seen include $464,000 in parks revenues and then their related expenditures. So it's going to be $322,000 for the 2022-2025 King County Levy funding, $119,000 for golf fees, as well as a $53,000 reduction to true-up the 2019-2020 Veterans, Senior, and Human Services Levy. Then there is going to be $353,000 to reallocate street funds for crosswalk safety and traffic calming to the 2024 pavement preservation project, so just moving the funding from the operating to a project. And then there's $326,000 to allocate levy funds, $115,000 to the Morrol Meadows Expansion, $110,000 to the Salt Air Vista Playground, $63,000 to the Parks Lifecycle, and $38,000 to the Green River Trail and Van Doren's Park Project. Also included are $93,000 to allocate golf funds for a security update with facilities, $75,000 to increase the lodging tax fund budget for grants that were issued in 2024, $50,000 to move funding from traffic calming to the Reef Road Project for traffic calming work completed within the projects, $30,000, and that includes $10,000 from the Fleet Fund to the Fleet Keybox Project, and then $10,000 to budget the funds within the project, and then $10,000 to move funds from parks, paths, and trails to their operations lifecycle. And then lastly, a reduction of $240,000 to remove the Human Services Levy gap funding since the levy was renewed and those funds are no longer needed. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Boyce.
Sorry for the phone. That was in honor of Les Thomas, so I apologize for that. The golf security, have we been having issue around security with the golf?
No, it's to kind of update their security, like the access cards within the security.
Oh, okay, gotcha. All right.
But I think we have been having issues.
Again?
We have been having issues, though.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 450 for consolidating budget adjustments made between October 1, 2024, and October 31, 2024, reflecting an actual budget increase of $21,339,430.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle. All right, and you have the financial reports.
All right, Michelle Ferguson, Financial Planning Manager, again, presenting the September 2024 monthly financial report. On the first slide, highlighted is the property tax revenues. Currently, a little over 55% of the revenues have been collected, of the budgeted revenues have been received. Through September 2024, revenues are about $150,000 higher than they were at this time last year. The city receives the bulk of the payments from King County in April and October, so we'll expect to see $6 to $7 million in revenues coming in next month or in the October report. And highlighted on this slide are other taxes, and other taxes include BNO taxes, which make up the majority of it, as well as admissions tax and gambling tax. So total these, the budget for BNO tax is $9.6 million. Admissions tax is about $600,000, and gambling tax is $275,000. The June and July revenues, you can see, were a little higher than budgeted than last year, but August and September are slightly lower, but they kind of make up for it. So overall, the revenues are $240,000 higher than they were at this time last year, and all three of those combined, we're anticipating revenues to be about $950,000 over budget at year end. So on this slide, the blue highlighted numbers for revenues, you can see that the budget is $121 million. We're anticipating that estimated actuals for revenues will be about $5 million higher at $126 million, which is about $5 million lower than it was in 2023, but still going to be adding some money to the fund balance. And expenditures are expected to come in about $3 million under budget, which is about a million and a half over what was spent last year. And then the numbers highlighted, the categories highlighted in that kind of yellowy color are just the categories that we expect to see revenues lower than we did in 2023, but still higher than budgeted. So there's nothing to be concerned with. We budgeted lower on purpose because we knew that they were going to be a little bit less, but still lower than they were last year. And then highlighted on this side, for the other funds, there are a whole lot of changes, so just kind of talking about some random funds that we don't normally talk about. Last one, you can see that when we did the adopted budget, which was a year and a half ago when we created the budget, we anticipated revenues and expenditures to be close to a million and a half dollars for each. That's, they're coming in quite a bit lower as members kind of drop off the plan or change plans, the revenues and the expenditures are lower. So instead of using $288,000 worth of fund balance in that fund, we are actually anticipating putting a little bit back into the fund balance. Then highlighted on this side is sewer. We've talked about it before. The revenues and expenditures are anticipated to be higher than the budgeted, so in the budget change that's coming next month, there'll be a budget change for that. The revenues will cover the change in expenditures, and that is due to the King County pass-through amount being higher than anticipated when the budget was created. So the revenues will cover that expense. And then lastly, the facilities fund, anticipated that we were going to use about $1.7 million of fund balance to fund some lifecycle projects, but in reality, due to some salary savings and other savings, it's anticipated that only about $750,000 of fund balance will be used. But there will be a budget change on the next budget amendment, and that is going to be to move some funding from the facilities operating to the facility's lifecycle, just to make sure there's enough money to cover the transfer out to those lifecycle projects. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Uh-uh.
All right, thank you so much, Michelle. Thank you for doing a great job every time. All right, next up, we'll pass it on to Councilor Michaud for parks, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Up first, we have Lori Gilfoyle.
Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. Lori Gilfoyle, Human Services. I'm here to present an amendment to our contract with Stuart McNichols-Harmel to authorize an additional one year on our current contract at a cost of $1,291,819. The reason for this amendment is that we are awaiting a decision from the Washington State Supreme Court regarding case standards or the standards in changing the case counts. I can answer any questions.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Lori? All right, I will read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Agreement for Indigent Defense Services with Stuart McNichols-Harmel Incorporated, P.S., subject to the final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Lori. All right, up next, we have Brian Higgins to talk about the Inurban Trail at Naden.
Thank you. Good evening. Brian Higgins, Senior Parks Project Manager. Going to be talking tonight about our consultant services agreement with KTB, I'm sorry, KPG Somas at the Inurban Trail on Naden Avenue. Just to get you oriented about where we're talking about, so the Inurban Trail is right over here, it's just two blocks west of City Hall. So the stretch we're going to be talking about is from Willis Street up to Meeker Street. And here's a quick view of it, like last week, of Willis Street, kind of showing you the conditions of kind of what the trail looks like and what the area looks like here. This is the view from Willis Street looking to the north. And then another view similarly from Meeker Street looking to the south. I'm just kind of standing right there, right at the edge of Meeker Street, taking this photo. You can see it's kind of a, it's a kind of one of the worst sections of the Inurban, in my opinion, so. So the work we've been doing to date is looking at realigning where the trail goes. So the current route is shown here in red. If you look at the red, it kind of comes down at Willis and you go over on this little loop, and then you go up the trail, and then it kind of ends you at this intersection here at Meeker that takes you across to the Uplands Play Field. So the work that we've been working on right now is kind of realigning the trail with that dotted yellow line that takes you basically straight off of Willis and takes you up to kind of a new intersection here at Seventh and Meeker. So we've been kind of coordinating this work with three other projects that are going on right now. One is the Willis Ride-In-Ride-Out Project. The other one is the Meet Me on Meeker Street improvements that are going to happen there on Meeker Street, coming from, oh, I think Lincoln, up to the Inurban Trail. And then we've also been coordinating with PSE on the improvements to their substation, which bordered the, bordered the trail here in this spot. So we started work on this project kind of in late 2023, and we've reached the 60% design milestone to date. And so this consultant services agreement with KTP, KPG Somas, will allow us to take the plans to 100% bid rate documents and will support us through construction of the project. I can take any questions.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, I will read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant services agreement with KPG Somas Incorporated, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thanks, Brian. Back to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Michaud. Public Works for Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We are going to hear from David Payne, and it's another chance to accept some funds.
Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers. David Payne, City Transportation Planner with Public Works, here to present on the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the grant acceptance from WashDOT for pedestrian hybrid beacon on SR 99 or Pacific Highway. So each even, each even year, WashDOT releases a call for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. You would have heard from these projects last in January, when the city's traffic engineer, Eric Preston, presented three projects for this year, and WashDOT selected, and that the local road safety plan that Public Works engineering staff prepares is a prerequisite or a requirement to submit for, for this grant application process. So of those three projects, WashDOT selected a pedestrian hybrid beacon on Pacific Highway SR 99, just north of 246th Street, between 246th and 244th. The location shown on the left is approximately a block or a block and a half to the east of Salt Air Vista Park. The project also leverages, you see the illustration, the example there on the right, of what it'll look like roughly when it's done. And the project will also leverage the median in the middle of the roadway, which will allow a pedestrian refuge space in between. The total amount is $1.163, $1.163 million to install those pedestrian improvements, including the pedestrian hybrid beacon. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? That'll be well received. So I'm going to go ahead and read the motion. I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $1,163,000 from Washington State Department of Transportation for the Highway Traffic Safety Improvement Program, Pacific Highway South, State Route 99, pedestrian crossing safety improvement project. amend the budget, authorize the expenditure of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, David. Motion passes. Now we're going to hear from Rod Langford about the annual chemical supply that we get in for our water.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members. My name is Rod Langford, Utility Site and Process Control Manager, one in the Water Department here at the City of Kent. I'm here this afternoon with a housekeeping item. As you know, we annually advertise for the water treatment chemical supplies to ensure consistency with budgetary needs. Next year's agreement is with the same supplier as we had this year. Jones Chemical Incorporated. Jones Chemical Incorporated supplies us with sodium hydroxide and chlorine gas. Sodium hydroxide is used to, for pH adjustment to reduce corrosion in pipes and in our pipes and in the distribution system and also in our customers' internal plumbing. And it keeps us in compliance with the lead and copper rule. Chlorine gas is used in our water treatment process to kill viruses and pathogens, also to provide a level of protection to the water supply while it's out in the distribution system. And it keeps us in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. The overall cost for the water treatment chemicals for the next year is slightly higher than this year. Little over $2,000. With that, I have a motion to approve our water treatment chemical supply, goods and services agreement with JCI Incorporated. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Same one that we go through each year. Okay. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a goods and services agreement with JCI Jones Chemical, Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And last, we have, the last two items will be Tony DiNati presenting to us.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair, Council Members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon with you. Today, I'm going to be talking to you about two items. The first is an action item request for our 2025 recycling events. And the second one is an information-only item updating everyone on the 2025 solid waste rates. My name's Tony DiNati. I'm a Conservation Coordinator here in the Public Works Department. Each year, the city hosts multiple residential recycling events. To do so effectively, the city must hire a contractor to staff, implement the event, and contract with the recycling vendors. In October, the city advertised an RFP for a recycling event consultant to do this work and now recommends contracting with Olympic Environmental Resources, OER. OER has been doing this type of work for cities in King County for over 30 years and additionally 20 years here in Kent. To have a contract with them for the 2025 recycling collection season, it would be $163,295, an amount which is fully grant funded by our three solid waste grants. Residents can begin marking their calendars now for upcoming free recycling events. We, at our very familiar locations, we have our three Saturday events from nine to three. And then we are going to have five mini events. Soon as this contract, if we approve this, then we can begin working with the contractor on finalizing the dates and locations for those mini events. Residents can be assured that these events are going to be spread out in their local areas. So we will have locations up on the West Hill, in the Valley, and the East Hill. These are all free events for everyone to attend. So we get the word out through our mailer. And then too, our communications team here in the city does a really wonderful job through social media, the mayor's Friday emails and more. So a big thank you to them. Residents will want to get a heads up and check out our website now to kind of get an idea of what they can bring to these events. Our Friday mini events, right, they're weekdays, so they're, and they're shorter. We really hone in on some specific items where our Saturday events are larger and we take a wider variety, being from nine to three. Residents can expect to get those flyers in the mail with the details, specifics. The, for our March 1st event, they should expect to see a flyer like that mid to late February. So also some exciting news. We're bringing back the compost, backyard compost bins and water barrels. This has been probably close to about 10 years since we've had this. This is a very popular, these are very popular items. And for $25 apiece, residents can purchase one or both. So this is really cool. And this, all the details of this will be in that February flyer and on our website as we get closer to the date. So with that, I'll accept any questions.
Some good news.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Councilmember Larimer.
Councilmember Larimer.
And Michelle.
Very excited. I still have my water barrel from about 10 years ago.
Yay.
That served us well.
All right. Good. Good, good.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, same. I have some water barrels and I'll get a compost one this time. Great job on getting the grant to pay for these events. It's a great opportunity for people to clean out their garage, clean out your yard. There's no need for you to dump things on the side of the road because you can recycle all of that stuff at this event. So great job.
And with that compost, it's great for your garden. So not only does it keep things out of the landfill, keep things, trash off the road, it makes a rich bed for your plantings. That is it. I will go ahead and I move to authorize the mayor to sign a goods and services agreement with Olympic Environmental Resources, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? In that case, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a goods. I'm sorry, I just said that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So with that, we have one more and it's information only.
Great. Thank you all very much. And just the second item, I'd like to just brief everyone about the 2025 annual solid waste rate adjustment. As a reminder, or for those who don't know, our solid waste rates are broken down into two components. These two components together make our rate what we pay. And that's our collection component and our, the disposal component. In accordance with the city's solid waste contract with Republic Services, the collection rates are allowed to adjust annually for inflation based on three standardized economic indices. The disposal rates are also allowed to adjust annually for inflation based on King County's tipping fee adjustment and the change in the fixed annual fee. On January 1st, both residents and businesses should expect to see a slight increase in their garbage rates. And as a reminder, the, your rates include, the price you're paying for your rates include weekly garbage service in every other week, recycling in every other week, food and yard waste. So the more you're utilizing your recycling and your food and yard waste cart, ideally, if there's space left in your garbage, you can adjust the size and potentially save some money that way. And you just still have the same amount of recycling and garbage, recycling and food and yard waste. So although the annual rate adjustment is increasing, the sustainability adjustment is decreasing for single-family residents from $1.15 per month to 66 cents per month. So at the end of the day, a resident with a 32-gallon cart will only see about an increase of $1.10 before taxes and fees. That's, with all three services, that's pretty, pretty good. Details of the rates can easily be found at our website or Republic Services. People can contact me directly if they would like any more information. I'd be happy to talk trash until their hearts content.
Thank you very much. Questions, concerns, comments? Next time you come back, would you please give us some more information just to make sure all of our businesses know that there are requirements for them as far as their cuttings and tree limbs, grasses, all that sort of stuff, keeping it out of the trash cans and trash bins?
Sure.
So there's nothing else? Public Works is done? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenter. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned until 5:15 for Council Workshop. Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned until 5:15 for Council Workshop. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, November 19. We have two items on our agenda. First up is our annual update from Mike McTudis, Green River Update Place. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Council President, Council members. And I'm Mike McTudis. I'm the Environmental Engineering Manager for the city. And I'll be providing the update on all the things that have happened with the Green River this last year and what's coming up this coming year. We've had things, quite a few things happen just in the last month even through this morning with the flood control district. So I'll go ahead and jump in. So I'll be talking about the overview of the watershed, which is the same as how it's been, just a very quick overview, talking about Howard Hansen Dam. There have been some big movings on the Fish Passage late this year, as well as the King County Flood Control District, the upcoming rainy season, which is already here, rainy and windy season, and the salmon habitat projects that we're working on. So as you can see from the map, this is the same map. We have the city of Kent, which is mostly in the lower green. Western part of the city goes directly out into Puget Sound up on the west hill, and then the east hill goes down into Seuss Creek, which is called the Middle Green River. The middle green and the lower green boundary is right around where Highway 18 is, where the river goes under. And I'll zoom in just a little bit, and you can just see where the river kind of goes along the south portion of the city through the valley and then goes up the west hill. So it separates us hydraulically from the city of Auburn down at the upstream end of the city, and then drops about 20 feet going from the south end of the city to the north end. So it is very, which is still very flat going over 12 miles through the city, drops about 20 feet. So just a little over a foot a mile, about a foot and a half per mile, which is not very much. So I'll just talk about the Howard Hansen Dam. Howard Hansen Dam, they had, the Corps of Engineers had their annual flood prep meeting recently. The dam is operating normally. It is, the reservoir is virtually empty at this point, so they are ready for any type of flood event to come in, just as they would be normally. They have about 106,000 acre-feet of storage capacity, and right now there's about 2,000 acre-feet of water, and that'll be, and they're draining it overnight, so there'll be much less even in there by tomorrow morning. And then the Howard Hansen Dam downstream Fish Passage. So this year, they're continuing the design on it. They are still on schedule to have that completed in 2030, so that's still six years away. There was $500 million included in the president's budget that was proposed this year. That has not been finalized by Congress, but we're optimistic that it will be. The Corps of Engineers did just award a construction contract on this, so for full construction for $657 million. So that would be a complete construction, and then they got the contractor in a little bit ahead of time so that they can work with the design, through the final design, and provide input onto that. And design, construction should be starting in 2026, and then going through till they start allowing the fish up into the 100 miles of upstream river and stream habitat above the dam. So just for perspective, the Green River, the Duamish and the Green River is about just over 60 miles from Elliott Bay all the way up to the dam, and they have about, like I said, about 100 miles of Green River above the dam, Green River and the tributaries, that you can see some of the tributaries in the brown watershed above the dam. So that is still on schedule, which is a really good thing. We have, we've done a lot of work down here in the lower green in the city of Kent with habitat projects over the last since, especially since the Chinook were listed as endangered in 1999. So the last 25 years, quite a few improvements have been made of side channels and vegetation and things like that. So a lot of those will be developed when they start allowing the fish to go upstream of the dam, and then we'll start seeing them come downstream in the 2030s. King County Flood Control District has an updated website this year, so that is something. They also have just updated their flood warning app, and that's something I'll provide the link to a little bit further down the line. So as I mentioned, there have been some progress with the flood control district. They did pass a budget just this morning for 2025. As I've mentioned to you in the past, they have been dealing with some budget shortfall issues, not shortfall, but cash fund balance issues. So these are the items that affect Kent in a very significant way that are still in the budget. That was passed today, the Black River Pump Station, which drains the Garrison Creek, Spring Brook Creek, and Mill Creek watersheds. All of those go north through the city into Renton and Tukwila, and then out the Black River Pump Station at the point where the lower green becomes the Duamish. So the Black River Pump Station is by far the most expensive project on the flood control district budget, and it has, current forecast is another $220 million, and they've done quite a bit of work. And that's, the Black River Pump Station was built in very early 1970s, so it's over 50 years old. So they've been replacing the pumps, they've been upgrading it for earthquake protection. So large pumps as well as small pumps, as well as the Fish Passage is going to be upgraded, so we'll be able to see, should be able to see a lot more of the Coho, especially coming up Mill Creek through Kent, which we've been doing improvements on Mill Creek and Garrison also, as well as the Green River. And then the Desamone Levy Repair, that was a levy that was, that's in Tukwila but protects the downstream end of Kent. That was damaged in the February 2020 storm, and unfortunately, just, I just found out just recently that that repair is being postponed another year, so we're going to have to live with that at least through this winter and next winter. So now the estimate is to have that begin construction, a two-year construction, starting in 2026. And then the two big levy projects in Kent that are necessary for us to be able to get FEMA accreditation are the Signature Point Levy and then the Milwaukee Two Levy. And during the February 2020 event, those levies both had one point on each of them that came somewhat close to being overtopped by the river, and that was due to USGS gauge change, and I'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit further along. But these, these projects are still in the flood control district budget. We do need to work with them to get updated ILAs to be able
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, November 19. We have two items on our agenda. First up is our annual update from Mike McTudis. Green River Update, please. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Council President, Council members. And I'm Mike McTudis. I'm the Environmental Engineering Manager for the city. And I'll be providing the update on all the things that have happened with the Green River this last year and what's coming up this coming year. We've had things, quite a few things happen just in the last month even through this morning with the Flood Control District. So I'll go ahead and jump in. So I'll be talking about the overview of the watershed, which is the same as how it's been, just a very quick overview, talking about Howard Hansen Dam. There have been some big movings on the Fish Passage late this year, as well as the King County Flood Control District, the upcoming rainy season, which is already here, rainy and windy season, and the salmon habitat projects that we're working on. So as you can see from the map, this is the same map. We have the city of Kent, which is mostly in the lower green. Western part of the city goes directly out into Puget Sound up on the west hill, and then the east hill goes down into Seuss Creek, which is called the Middle Green River. The middle green and the lower green boundary is right around where Highway 18 is, where the river goes under. And I'll zoom in just a little bit, and you can just see where the river kind of goes along the south portion of the city through the valley and then goes up the west hill. So it separates us hydraulically from the city of Auburn down at the upstream end of the city, and then drops about 20 feet going from the south end of the city to the north end. So it is very, which is still very flat going over 12 miles through the city, drops about 20 feet. So just a little over a foot a mile, about a foot and a half per mile, which is not very much. So I'll just talk about the Howard Hansen Dam. Howard Hansen Dam, they had, the Corps of Engineers had their annual flood prep meeting recently. The dam is operating normally. It is, the reservoir is virtually empty at this point, so they are ready for any type of flood event to come in, just as they would be normally. They have about 106,000 acre-feet of storage capacity, and right now there's about 2,000 acre-feet of water, and that'll be, and they're draining it overnight, so there'll be much less even in there by tomorrow morning. And then the Howard Hansen Dam downstream Fish Passage. So this year, they're continuing the design on it. They are still on schedule to have that completed in 2030, so that's still six years away. There was $500 million included in the president's budget that was proposed this year. That has not been finalized by Congress, but we're optimistic that it will be. The Corps of Engineers did just award a construction contract on this, so for full construction, for $657 million. So that would be a complete construction, and then they got the contractor in a little bit ahead of time so that they can work with the design, through the final design, and provide input onto that. And design, construction should be starting in 2026, and then going through till they start allowing the fish up into the 100 miles of upstream river and stream habitat above the dam. So just for perspective, the Green River, the Duamish and the Green River is about just over 60 miles from Elliott Bay all the way up to the dam, and they have about, like I said, about 100 miles of Green River above the dam, Green River and the tributaries, that you can see some of the tributaries in the brown watershed above the dam. So that is still on schedule, which is a really good thing. We have done a lot of work down here in the lower green in the city of Kent with habitat projects over the last, since, especially since the Chinook were listed as endangered in 1999. So the last 25 years, quite a few improvements have been made of side channels and vegetation and things like that. So a lot of those will be developed when they start allowing the fish to go upstream of the dam, and then we'll start seeing them come downstream in the 2030s. King County Flood Control District has an updated website this year, so that is something. They also have just updated their flood warning app, and that's something I'll provide the link to in a little bit further down the line. So as I mentioned, there have been some progress with the Flood Control District. They did pass a budget just this morning for 2025. As I've mentioned to you in the past, they have been dealing with some budget shortfall issues, not shortfall, but cash fund balance issues. So these are the items that affect Kent in a very significant way that are still in the budget. That was passed today, the Black River Pump Station, which drains the Garrison Creek, Springbrook Creek, and Mill Creek watersheds. All of those go north through the city into Renton and Tukwila, and then out the Black River Pump Station at the point where the lower green becomes the Duamish. So the Black River Pump Station is by far the most expensive project on the Flood Control District budget, and it has, current forecast is another $220 million, and they've done quite a bit of work. And that's, the Black River Pump Station was built in very early 1970s, so it's over 50 years old. So they've been replacing the pumps, they've been upgrading it for earthquake protection. So large pumps as well as small pumps, as well as the Fish Passage is going to be upgraded. So we'll be able to see, should be able to see a lot more of the Coho, especially coming up Mill Creek through Kent, which we've been doing improvements on Mill Creek and Garrison also, as well as the Green River. And then the, excuse me, the Desamone Levy Repair. That was a levy that was, that's in Tukwila but protects the downstream end of Kent. That was damaged in the February 2020 storm, and unfortunately, just, I just found out just recently that that repair is being postponed another year. So we're going to have to live with that at least through this winter and next winter. So now the estimate is to have that begin construction, a two-year construction, starting in 2026. And then the two big levy projects in Kent that are necessary for us to be able to get FEMA accreditation are the Signature Point Levy and then the Milwaukee II Levy. And during the February 2020 event, those levies both had one point on each of them that came somewhat close to being overtopped by the river, and that was due to USGS gauge change, and I'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit further along. But these projects are still in the Flood Control District budget. We do need to work with them to get updated ILAs to be able to move those forward.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
So you said in the King County budget, they approved some funding. Was it the inception-to-date budget funding, or was it a different number?
They approved, the inception-to-date is everything from the start of the budget of 2008 all the way up through 2024. That's what's been included for those projects. The 25 through, 2025 through 202030, they approved just 2025.
Just 2025, okay.
Just 2025.
Thank you.
So this is an updated chart of the Flood Control District funding, and I'll zoom in on a couple of things here. So this pink line, this was their cash balance. And I've shown it to you before that it was forecast to go below zero at the end of this year. And so the forecast is still, as of the end of 2024, to have a cash balance of about $1.5 million. So down to really not much of anything with a budget of well over $300 million worth of projects. So today, they approved the budget with a three-cent levy increase. So the current levy through 2024 is about seven cents per $1,000 of assessed value, which adds up to just under $60 million a year of a Flood Control District revenue. So an additional three cents will take that up over $83 million. So it is a very significant increase, but you can see it bumps it up just for a year. And then there are just so many projects in the pipeline, including the Black River Pump Station, as well as the city projects, as well as county-wide projects on the Snoqualmie and the Cedar and other places. And then I'll point out the gray line here, that's the revenue. So that's over a 40% increase just this year, this coming year. So very significant increase. But because there are so many projects in the pipeline, there are other parts of the budget that they are going to be addressing. They're going to, they're going to have a bonding policy put in place or brought to the Flood Control District by April of this coming year. So they'll be working on that the next three to four months. And then they will be doing a very thorough look of the six-year CIP, and taking a look at potentially reprioritizing projects and delaying projects in order to avoid the balance going below zero at the end of 2025. So it was progress, and it was very necessary, especially for projects down here in Kent, where we have, we have about 1/8 of the state's GDP is right down here in the Kent Valley, over 100 million square feet of warehouse and commercial space. These are all things that I know you all well know, that there's just an incredible number of jobs and homes and businesses that need to be protected. And so we will continue working with the Flood Control District to have our projects continue to move forward. So this is just what I mentioned, the 2024 levy, seven cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So that means that for a home, just for using round numbers, you know, a million-dollar home would be about $70 a year. $500,000 assessed value home would be about $35 a year. And so that would go up from $35 a year on a $500,000 home up to $50 a year on your property taxes, or for homes more expensive, the amount goes up more. But that, as I mentioned, raises the levy for the Flood Control District from $58.5 million for 2024 up to $83.6 million for 2025. Another item that the Flood Control District made progress on this year was the adoption of, the completion of the Programmatic Environmental Impact Statement for the Lower Green River Corridor Flood Hazard Management Plan. That was adopted by the Board of Supervisors just in September. And so they did provide, and the budget includes $900,000 to start the preparation of the actual plan, starting in 2025. So they finished the environmental impact statement. They took, I believe, the number of comments that they had in there was over 1,800 pages of comments from countywide. A lot of people were interested in it. They did provide the final impact, environmental impact statement. They adopted that. Now they're going to be proceeding in 2025 with the preparation of the actual plan. And that's just for the lower green. So that's a, that'll be a very good planning document for the Flood District to have, and we will be very involved in providing comments on what goes into that. Couple of levy repairs. These were, I'll talk about the two levy repairs from the 2020 storm. The first is the McCoy Levy Repair, which is down at the south end of the city. It's right at the downstream end of the Horseshoe Bend, so there's a tight curve there. And the city had already, about just over 10 years ago, had put a setback levy in, because when we started doing our analysis for the FEMA accreditation, we saw that that levy was very steep, was not going to be able to be accredited under federal standards. So we worked to get a grant from the state at that time to set the levy back. And during the 2020 event, there was damage to it, so not a big surprise. But the fencing that you see on this picture, that is a Puget Sound Energy High-Pressure Gas Regulating Station. So that was the only piece of that area that was, that's in front of the setback levy that the city did. So the work that the Corps of Engineers did, and you can see the river in the background here, so I'm looking kind of southwest at the repair. So the Corps of Engineers did that work to protect the PSE gas regulating station. And part of that is that the city is turning over the setback levy to King County to become part of the official federal levy. So since it was built, it's been maintained by the city, but it's being taken over now by the King County Flood Control District, or the King County managed under, as the service provider for the King County Flood Control District. And the city will be in its normal role, just as the underlying property owner, but not the owner of the levy. And then the Desamone Levy Repair, I mentioned that, which unfortunately is being delayed another year. That is really the number-one issue that we will be watching over the winter, as it has been for the last several years, because of the slumping that happened there, as well as some of the seepage that went through the levy in February 2020. There was water coming through the levy, which was causing boils on the landward side of the levy. The water was clear at that point, but if it starts pushing material in, that's when it really becomes an emergency very quickly. So we do keep an eye on that. And the Corps of Engineers and King County have an emergency action plan in place, and they will be watching that with levy patrols, as well as the city of Tukwila. If, during storm events especially, if the water comes up above about 9,000 cubic feet per second, then that's when the water will start coming up above the ground level behind the levy, and that's when you have to start watching the water coming through. And then winter forecast. So I'll talk a little bit about, NOAA had a workshop about a month ago, and they are bringing in some really new, very advanced tools that they're starting to add to their repertoire that we're going to be able to take advantage of. And I'll talk a little bit about those. The ocean conditions that we have are a little bit flipped from last, the last couple of winters. We had El Nino patterns, which during the, what you look at right at the equator, that's what affects us. This is the Pacific Ocean right at the equator, and you see blue there now. Over the last couple of summers or winters, those were red, which means they were above-average winter temperatures for the ocean conditions. And that influences where the jet stream comes in, and it pushes the jet stream the last couple of years. You've probably heard about the flooding and the rainfall and the snow down in California and Nevada. That is not expected this winter. Of course, you know, things, weather changes, but that is not expected to be the prevailing weather pattern this winter. Last year, the drier part was up north and the wetter part was south, so those have flipped. Now we're expected to be wetter and a little bit colder, and then the drier weather would be down towards California and the southwest. And so here's the seasonal temperature and precipitation outlook for December, January, and February. And just like I mentioned, up in Washington, expected to be, chances are above average for below-normal temperatures, and then above average for above-average precipitation. So these just show the chances. It doesn't show the chances for the, like these atmospheric rivers, one of which is coming in tonight. And it, so it's hard to gauge exactly where those atmospheric rivers go, but the chances are that the overall precipitation is going to be above normal for this coming winter. This is something new. This is a map of all the atmospheric rivers that happened last winter. So you can see, and this was a lot more than the year before. And so the ones that I've highlighted here are the, kind of the dark pink ones. So those were the extreme. There were two extreme atmospheric rivers that hit us last winter. We had a pretty mild winter as far as river flows, but those came, and then I'll just go ahead to the next slide. Those coincided with these two peaks. And that went up to just about half of the river capacity, just under 6,000 CFS on the first one, and then just about 5,000 CFS on the second one. So you could see on this map that they came in a little bit south. Kent is up in here, so they came in and hit southwest Washington. The ones that we need to watch for are some of the, if you get a more east-west alignment, get a powerful one that comes in, because the Green River watershed is aligned east and west. So if you get these that come up from the south and go more northerly, they can just go right across the watershed, and they can rain a lot, but they're not going to, they're not going to go through the watershed, they just kind of cross it. So we do get a lot of rain that way, but not really the ones that we're really worried about. And then I talked about that, Green River monitoring. So we have the same network that we've been using the last several years. We upgraded that significantly since the 2020 event, when we saw the high river flows. We use city gauges, and you can see one of those that we installed on the overpasses, the great separations over the river. So we have three of those. We have those at 212th Street. We have them at Washington Avenue, and then at Central Avenue. And then we partner with the USGS on three gauges inside the city also, and I bring that annual contract to you every fall. So we have those gauges at the 277th Bridge, and then also at the Meeker Street, and which is this one. This is the Meeker Street Pedestrian Bridge at the golf course, and then up at 200th Street. So we have a very good set of active gauges. We also have a couple of cameras, so we can watch them remotely. We have one of those at the, right at the areas where we had the higher water levels in 2020. We put one of those at the Milwaukee II Levy, so we could actively watch the water levels at the Milwaukee II Levy, which is just east of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks, and then at the Signature Point Levy, just west of Washington Avenue. So this slide is just a reiteration of the change of the rating curve that happened in 2020. So when the USGS did an analysis of, a very in-depth measurement at the Auburn Gauge, which is used to, by the Corps of Engineers, to tell them how much water to release, they go up to 12,000 cubic feet per second at the high flood level. So what the USGS did was that they looked at the, near the Auburn Gauge, and they said, well, the water's flowing a little bit higher at that point. So instead of going to, at 12,000 CFS at elevation 67.0, they can take it up to 67.8. So essentially, at that point, they can raise the river another 8/10ths of a foot, so quite a bit, and still be at their target flow level. But we can't raise our levies all eight by 8/10ths of a foot, and as the river is narrower in Kent than it is in Auburn, that is equal to about two feet of rise when it gets down to Kent, because it is a little bit narrower. So we lose about, instead of having 12,000 CFS capacity, we're looking at about 10,500 CFS capacity. The river in the storm in 2020 was measured at about 11,700. So it was near the 12,000, but it was, it was well, it was within our free board. So we do have free board on the levies, but it was within the free board, especially at the two points that I mentioned. So those are the points we will certainly be watching very, very closely, as we have. And then the picture up here in the upper left, that is the Signature Point Levy. That's Washington Avenue crossing. And you can see how close it is right at the top of the bank during that storm event. So we coordinate with the USGS. They have committed to, when the river comes above 9,000 CFS, they're going to go out to the Auburn Gauge and recheck all of their measurements out there to confirm or change the rating again. We can coordinate very actively with the Corps of Engineers and King County during, throughout the winter. We go to regional flood prep preparedness meetings. We have temporary flood barriers ready. Our operations section has that. And then we have annual trainings on levy patrols and water safety for our in-house staff. Here's some contacts for King County, for the public. They have the King County Flood Warning Center, phone numbers, flood alerts. People can sign up for those to come automatically to their phones, or to their computer via emails or by texts, by signing up at this website. And then the new flood warning app, which is much more advanced than the one they've been using for over the last 10 years. So it has a lot more forecasts involved, and a lot more options that people can look at. So you can sign up for that or get it downloaded at flood.kingcounty.gov. Endangered species. So we'll be, we have two projects that we're really actively working on. We have the Lower Russell Habitat Area A, which is within the Lower Russell Project that was just completed by the Flood Control District and King County. Recently, we had the groundbreaking on that, or the ribbon-cutting on that last year. So there's one more habitat area that we're working on that is, currently, we're working through a habitat work group to finalize some alternatives of what, how to proceed with that, and then the Boeing Rock Habitat Enhancement. So here's a drone picture of Habitat Area A. This is looking south, so the new Van Doren's Park is just under the title here. And then we have this whole area. We will have alternatives for how to build some off-channel habitat through this area to allow the fish, another place to get off the river during high-flow events so they don't get swept out to, down to Elliott Bay too quickly. Gives them, what the science has been finding is that if you can give them another month in the lower green, then the chances of survival go up by many, many times. If they go swept out too quickly, their chances of coming back in, at the end of their life cycle are virtually zero. So it's really something that we're really been focusing on, and we've been getting a lot of regional support through the RIAA, and through the, King County has been supporting our projects also. And then the second project is along Boeing, which is the Boeing Levy, which is just north of that from 212th Street all the way up to Three Friends Fishing Hole up near 200th Street. And that is in almost the same stage of the project where we're wrapping up the alternatives analysis. We just got some updated alternatives from our consultant today that will be reviewing those and then taking them through the Habitat Work Group, which is a lot of the same organizations, but different people on the Habitat Work Group for this project, and with the goal for both of those projects of taking those into the next phase of those into preliminary design, past alternatives into preliminary design in spring of 2025. And those are, the preliminary design on both of those projects is already funded through grants from the Flood Control District Cooperative Watershed Management. And those were just discussed in the budget update that was here at the Committee of the Hole. the Committee of the Whole, and we provided those to you in, in the last month. And that is my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Councilmember Fincher.
With the improvements at the dam and the fish passage, will that alleviate having to truck the fish up? Will there come a day when they want to be trucked anymore?
Well, the, the, no, the, the trucking is going to be part, part of the, the permanent process. So you have, you have the Howard Hansen Dam, and then there's a dam about three miles downward, which is for, owned by Tacoma Public Utilities, and, which is where they have the intake for the water supply, which, which the City of Kent is a partner to. And so at that lower dam, Taquillo has a, an intake facility where they, where they would put the fish into the trucks, drive them the three miles up above the Howard Hansen Dam, and then put them in the reservoir. Then the new facility for, that is going to be built by the Corps of Engineers, will allow the fish to safely come downstream through the Howard Hansen Dam. And then they'll go over the, the, the smaller dam at Tacoma Public Utilities, and then down through the Middle Green, and then, then through, through Kent. So the, the trucking is going to be, it'll be something that they'll be controlling, so they can control the species and the numbers, but that'll be a permanent part of moving fish upstream of the dam.
Okay. And then at the rate we've been getting funding and the work has been going, any ideas to how many years before the work would be done?
Before the, the Howard Hansen?
Before the, our portion of the levee work would be done, so that we can go ahead and certify our portions of the levee?
That, that'll be something we will be work, actively working with the Flood Control District. There, as I mentioned, there's, there's the two pieces of levee in Kent that need to have the improvements in order to be, in order to meet federal accreditation requirements. So as soon as we can get updated, we'll be, work with the Flood Control District to get updated inter-local agreements, to move those forward, and then I'll be able to provide a much better idea of, of what the scheduling will be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Mike, you mentioned something like a half billion dollars in the President budget for the Howard Hansen Dam. With the new administration coming in, did that have any impact on, that could change or was it irrelevant?
I'm sure it will, because it hasn't been passed by the current Congress.
Okay.
Yes.
So still?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Which brings me up to that they've already started working with the contractor. Is that from the previous funding they already have, or?
There was, there was some previous funding. It was just over $200 million of previous funding, yes.
Okay, so that's, they're just anticipating that it is going to pass?
Yeah, and I have not seen the contract myself to see what kind of provisions they have.
Okay.
For, to, to deal with that, but.
That's brave. Okay, well, any other questions or comments?
If it, I, I'm sure they have some provisions. The, the Corps of Engineers knows how to handle these big contracts. They're not gonna.
Yeah.
Hang themselves out to dry.
That makes total sense, so. Any other questions, comments?
We have a lobby, a lobby, a lobbyist, a lobbyist, federally. Do they help with the type of things and make sure to facilitate, or they're just irrelevant?
For budget, for levees or Howard Hansen?
This, this, yeah, particular one.
No, we wouldn't typically use our federal lobbyists for this kind of thing. I mean, we can use them for information gathering and maybe, you know, sending a message that we support, but this is entirely a federal project.
Got you. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Well, and I was gonna say, like, the RIAA, that's one of our, you know, we also have priorities for the legislature within some of our subcommittees with the Flood Control District or in the RIAA.
Yeah, and as a partner to the Tacoma Second Supply Pipeline, Tacoma takes the lead on lobbying for the improvements.
Okay.
So we follow suit with them.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, those are all great questions. Thank you so much, Mike, for the update.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. And with that, next up, we have Laura Heron with National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Welcome, Laura. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, Council President, for having me here today. I'm Laura Heron. I am the Environmental Water Quality Supervisor for the City of Kent, and I'm here today to talk to you about the NPDS permit. For our stormwater management and NPDS, this permit is required under the Clean Water Act, and it is a five-year permit. We just had a new permit issued that became effective August 1st, so that's the permit that we're under. This is our stormwater management program. We update this every year. You can find it on our website if you want to see it or have comments for it. We have it up so the public can comment on it and participate in our plans. So this permit is, like I said, part of the Clean Water Act. In the state of Washington, the Department of Ecology oversees this program, and this program allows us, under this permit, to discharge water from our storm system into the waters of the state. So these are the programs I'll be talking to you about tonight. And as you can see, under this new permit that just became effective, there's a lot of new programs and requirements. And this is Clint. He's at our Street of Treats Event Education Outreach Event. He's one of our employees we've had for about six months now. So last year, in the beginning of this year, our staff successfully completed our Storm Water Management Action Plan, which was a requirement under the last permit. This plan will help advise us in developing strategies and different processes to protect water quality within our stormwater basin. As part of this, we had to do a prioritization of our basins, so all of the basins within the City of Kent, there's 38 of them, we did an analysis of them based on current land use, water, existing water quality data that we had, the different characteristics of the basins, and whether they could actually benefit from improvements. And we determined that the Mill Creek Basin specifically, the lower Mill Creek Basin, was going to be our basin of focus. And some of the things that we can do to meet these requirements under this plan is to have enhanced stormwater inspections. So what we're doing now is we're passing out spill kits that we're using our capacity grant funding for, so that, and teaching them how to do spill prevention and how to respond to spills if they do have them, because this is a very highly industrial manufacturing area, so there's a lot of activities that can cause pollutants. We also can do street sweeping and additional stormwater monitoring, and if we have them, we can take advantage of some retrofit act opportunities as well. So a lot of the, under this new permit, we have a lot more increased planning requirements. So we have to, this is under the one that's just become effective. We have to either make some additional stormwater actions for the lower Mill Creek area, or find another prioritization area to focus on. So those are the things that we'll determine under this permit. We also have a tree canopy program requirement, and I'll be talking about that in some, later on in some of the slides. Public education and outreach, this is to advise our community business owners, the general public about pollution prevention. So this is our Planet Protector Summit, and this is CJ, who's one of our inspectors, and he is doing the EnviroScape. I'm sure you guys have seen pictures of that before. And this is to educate children from our school district about pollution prevention. One of the new programs that we're going to have to educate the public on is PCBs. So we have subject categories that we are required to inform the public about and the different audiences that we need to give that information to. One of the new ones is PCBs. So PCBs are found in building materials, electronic components, that type of thing. And when people do maintenance or pressure washing of buildings, it can release these PVCs into the environment. So we are going out and talking to, when we do our source control inspections, talking to people about how to determine whether their building might have these pollutants and how to do pressure washing and use proper BMPs or maintenance to protect our stormwater from these pollutants. So it's usually they're finding between, buildings built between 1950, 1980 are at higher risk for having these materials. We also have behavioral change campaigns that we're responsible to do, and that's getting the public to want to do things that will, you know, behavior changes that they can make to protect our waters from pollutants. So one of the campaigns is to pick up after your pets. We have the Zero Poo, and we also pass out the stormwater, or the, sorry, the pet bag, poo bags with our Kent logo on it, and those are pretty popular. This is Natasha. She's one of our coordinators, and she is at Kent Cornucopia Days, giving some education and outreach, along with, again, the EnviroScape. One of our other behavioral change campaigns that we're working on is a community-based social marketing program, and that one is the Shut the Lid. If you look around Kent, again, very highly industrial, commercial, lots of dumpsters, and a lot of the lids are left open, which allows for pollutants to escape the dumpster or to fill the water with, or the catch basins with, sorry, dumpsters with rainwater that ends up in our catch basins. So we're trying to get them to shut the lid. Along with our responsibilities is to really make sure that we're getting this information out to all of our community. So we're looking at translating more of our materials here, some that we've had translated. If you look at the community-based social marketing poster, you can see we have different languages on there as well, and very clear messages with the circles and the do not do, you know, to make it more of a universal message. These are our Girl Scouts, and they're doing a team-up to clean up. I'm sure you've heard about that from Tony. And so one of our other responsibilities is to make sure that we're providing opportunities for the public to participate in our decision-making and in our pollution prevention activities. So they're out there doing the team-up to clean up, and I'm sure you've seen this father-son, or, sorry, father-daughter duo, and they've really taken it upon themselves to go above and beyond to go out and pick up litter. And I know they were recognized by the city. So providing the, not only providing these opportunities, but we are now responsible for documenting them and making sure that we turn in a report that explains what opportunities we're offering, and also methods that we use to identify overburdened communities, because we're really making sure that we're meeting their needs. That's one of our responsibilities, is to make sure they're getting the information that they need and the resources that they need. And we need to document how we determine where our overburdened communities are and how we are addressing that. So mapping and documentation, one of our responsibilities is to map our storm system. This is a map of our outfalls. We started out with having to map the location of our outfalls, and now the new requirement is we need to make sure that we're documenting the size and pipe type, so that's a whole nother responsibility. Our Public Works Operations staff, who are amazing, will be out collecting that information for us, and will be working with the GIS group to get that all documented. And also our tree canopy coverage. So we'll be mapping our tree canopy coverage, as well as, as I said before, our areas with our overburdened communities, and then the tree canopy coverage of our overburdened communities. This is so that we can make sure that we maintain our tree canopy coverage and improve it when possible to protect stormwater, you know, the effects of pollutants on our stormwater. Also, to, we need to document from all of our outfalls, any of the systems connected to that outfall, and determine whether they have flow control or water quality before it reaches waters of the state. So that will be a, a large undertaking to separate those all out. List it discharges and detection and elimination, our IDDE programs. These are the pictures that you guys are used to seeing, yeah. This one is actually, if you look at the first picture, they had secondary containment, which is good, right? So they had their hazardous materials stored in there, and then they had someone, they told their staff to go out and clean it, and so they just hosed it out into the catch basin, which defeats the purpose of having secondary containment. Our inspection staff were out and about, and they saw this, so they stopped in and met with them, and they educated them, they made sure that they got the system cleaned up, and then educated them on how they can dispose of that in the future without causing an illicit discharge. We also, again, having issues with fuel being stolen, so they'll drill the tank and they'll let it fill up their container to get as much of the fuel as they can, then they let the rest just drain out into the ground. And we also have car accidents that happen. There's a punctured fuel tank, so our, our people go out and respond to those. This is controlling runoff from new development, redevelopment, and construction sites. So you can see up top, those are proper BMPs, protecting piles of dirt so they don't get washed away into our storm system, putting down hydro seed to protect those soils so that they won't be loose and able to be washed into our system, and protecting our catch basins. We have an inspector, Matt McCollough, and he goes out and he makes sure that they have all of these BMPs in place to properly contain all of this to the sites, that pollutants or sediment is not leaving the site. So you can see a before and after picture. He had them, you can see the milky, chocolate milk, almost looking water that, you know, could be discharged off that site. So he'll have them cover those soils with the straw. He put in check dams to hold back some of that water, and then cover the piles behind them so they don't get washed away. So he goes out and he inspects those to make sure they're doing the right thing. Also, he, this is just recently, they did a concrete pour, and that's their concrete washwater in that first picture. And they used them, but then some, they also dumped it next to it, and then they didn't cover them, so when it rained, it overflowed. So he goes out and says, okay, this is how you use them, and then this is how you manage that and how you make sure that you're protecting these BMPs that you put in place. And the one right below it is where they didn't have any silt fencing in place, and so the water got washed off of site, and that's actually Matt right there. That's at a construction site where they dumped soils from their construction onto the neighboring property. So he'll go out and make sure that all of that is taken care of and set up to our standards. And here he is again. This is a before and after. You can see they didn't have BMPs installed, or they had them installed, but they weren't being maintained. So you can't, it's not just a matter of having them on site, you have to keep them maintained so that they're doing their job. So after, you can see it's much better, they're strawed down, piles are covered, and the silt fence is in place properly to keep the soils and sediment off of the street. Stormwater management for existing development is a new program, and this program is basically taking our stormwater planning, the program I talked about earlier, and implementing it. So we did all the planning for what we want to do, now this is how we're going to implement those plans. Some of the things we can do to meet these requirements are adding maybe water quality features to a flow control facility, like a vault, and add some type of water quality treatment. These are filters, and those are our Public Works Operations guys who are changing out those filters in that first picture there. Or having constructed wetlands using biofiltration to do some kind of treatment. We could also use education to meet that requirement and doing enhanced education. As I spoke earlier about handing out spill kits in our source control program, that's another way we can meet these requirements. So it doesn't have to be a retrofit, it can be other programs that we do. And in Kent, it has to be specific to Kent, and in Kent, with having so much industrial manufacturing, the education programs and the enhanced programs really go far. Also, in-house monitoring can meet those requirements. We had a contract with Aspect last year, and we're going to do this again this year, where we go out and take samples from our storm system and see if we find any illicit discharges, or if there's anything that we get hits on. We didn't get them last year, we, we did pretty good, but we continue to do this. So if we get a hit, we can look upstream and see what kind of source control properties upstream might have contributed to this, so that we can go and provide them with education. So we, we have a way of tracking that, because we've documented the types of processes at these different facilities, so that we can see what's upstream. A lot of these new programs are being initiated because of the concern with Six PPDQ. I'm sure you've heard of that. It's from Tireware, and we're actually meeting regionally on this, and the tire companies are actually involved, which is, I think, great. And you can see that with using LID and water quality treatments, it can really make a difference. And so we do this through our Surface Water Design Manual, we require this in, in our new development, and they're constantly looking for new ways to improve that, and so that's something that we're doing. Source control inspections. So our people go out for these inspections, it's not just looking at the stormwater system. This is going out and looking at the processes being completed at these businesses. What are they doing there? Are they cutting stone? Are they working on cars? What kind of pollutants might they have discharged from their property? And we work with them on these processes to get proper BMPs in place, so that they don't have discharges. So you can see, the first one, that's grease from restaurants, and their lids open and they've got it dripping everywhere, and there's buckets of grease. So we would go in and meet with them, have them clean up that area, and show them how to get that cleaned up and prevent it from happening again, maybe getting a bigger grease or getting another grease bin. The other one is stone cutting, and they had a process in place for taking care of their washwater from cutting stone, but it failed. So that's Heather Martin there. She's working with Ecology to help them come up with a better system that will work for them. We always try to work with them and educate them instead of dropping a hammer on them. We want to work with them and help them, and we're finding that this has built great relationships. They'll call us up, and we're going to be doing this process. What, what BMPs do we need to have in place? And it's awesome to see, it really is. Our group is really great with working with them. Again, same thing, litter, and it ends up in our storm system, so that's a catch basin in that second picture. So we've also been working with Republic. So we've also been working with Republic and trying to connect them with these businesses, saying, hey, you know, they'll come out and they'll help you determine what size dumpster you need, or maybe you need more pickups, and not just once, but maybe you need a larger dumpster or more pickup times, and so that's been really helpful. Same, another grease bin, and again, what it can do to our storm system. The good news is we're finding these, and we're going out and we're educating them, and we're getting them cleaned up, and when we explain to them the impact that it has on our environment, on our water, they take it to heart, I mean, the vast majority, and they want to do the right thing, so we help them get those BMPs in place. Operations and maintenance, this is broken up into two different sections. There's one that's for our public system, and then there's one for inspecting our private systems. So in the first picture, you can see our public staff at public operations, and they are doing an inspection with a camera. That's pretty neat. We got that with our capacity grant funding as well from Ecology, and they can put this camera down into this vault so they don't have to enter, so it's protecting their safety. And you can see that our other inspector, Steve, has his tablet out, and he can see what he's seeing with that camera. So it's safe, we get a better inspection, and they can also record it for future, which has been great for them. And then on the other side is our newest employee to our group, Chad, and he's doing an inspection of a private system. So what are public inspectors do for Public Works Ops? They have a huge commitment to meeting our NPDS requirements. Here they are cleaning the system, they are required to go out and inspect our system, and this is something they do annually. They're out there always inspecting, and they'll do any repairs or cleaning we need done, but they also assist us with spills in the right of way. We handle the ones on private property, but they're doing the ones that happen from car accidents, that type of thing. And they, I just shout out to them, they're great to work with, they are so eager to always make sure that we're meeting the requirements, and they're helping us. This is Clint. He's out doing a storm inspection, and this is any private stormwater facilities that are regulated by the City of Kent. So one of the big, for stormwater operations and maintenance, it's really us inspecting their flow control and their water quality structures. So as you can see, the first picture is a control structure that allows water to flow out of their system at a regulated rate, so that if we have a heavy rain, it's not flooding downstream. And the next one over is an infiltration pond, and it's also a wetland recharge pond, so that infiltrates water, and so that also helps with flow control, but it also helps with water quality, because it doesn't allow pollutants to just run into our system. They're also looking at integrity of the system. As you can see, that catch basin is falling apart, so they'll make sure that that gets repaired back up to our standards, or cleaned if need be, as the one on the right-hand side that's full of debris and leaves. Street sweeping is a new program. Luckily, we have a great program in place, and so we're really set for meeting this requirement. So that's been a benefit of ours, that we don't have to do as much for that. Self-inspection program development, this is a program that we will be looking into developing. It's something that is already required under our code, where if anybody owns a private system, they're responsible to inspect and maintain it. So we will go out and meet with them and teach them what to look for. When does it need maintenance? When does it need cleaning? So that they can inspect it and report back to us how it looks. This is also a great opportunity to provide education and have them become more involved with their system. Some of them don't know what even their system does, or what are the components of it. So when we have them go out and inspect it and take a look at it, they become more involved. They'll see like, oh, next to this dumpster, we always have to clean this catch basin, I need to have better BMPs in place so that doesn't happen, and they become more invested in taking care of it. And so that's been really helpful when we've been out working with them on this. The SAM program is Stormwater Action Monitoring. So under the permit, we have an option to do our own monitoring in-house, or we can join a regional program. I believe last I heard, all jurisdictions have chosen to participate in the Stormwater Action Monitoring Regional Plan. We all have a say and a vote into what types of studies they're going to do, or projects they're going to work on, or monitoring they're going to do, and it takes less staff time because we're doing that as a regional effort. So they do effectiveness studies, monitoring of our receiving waters, and source identification projects that we all benefit from. Because of the new requirements and new programs, under the new permit, we will need to update our codes, both the Illicit Discharges Code 7.14 and our Surface Water Code 7.05, and our Surface Water Design Manual. Our Surface Water Design Manual will wait until King County comes out and does their updates or amendments, because we adopted their program, so we have ours through the adoption of theirs. So we might not have to do a full resubmital of it, it might just be amendments. We're waiting to find that out after King County does theirs. And so finally, the benefits of these programs that we work on, protection of wetlands and aquatic ecosystems, improved quality of receiving water bodies, conservation of water resources, protection of public health, flood control, protection of aquatic animals and their habitat, and as you can see right here, this is Heather Martin. She will be our new, or she is our new analyst, so you'll be seeing her up here giving these presentations moving forward, and we're very excited to have her in that position. And she's worked really hard for this last one, building relationships with business owners through education outreach and BMP assistance. Like I said, they're calling us now, they're wanting to know what we can do to help them, and we've really worked hard to build those relationships. So that's my final slide. Any questions?
Thank you, Laura. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Great program. So these programs, are they, they all new, quite a few new ones?
Yeah.
Are they mandated from the state?
Yes.
And then are there any resource government mandates? It seems like extra work, so do you have the staff to continue to do this here, or how does that work?
Well, we're prioritizing, and we're, you know, making sure that we're doing what we can to meet all the requirements, and we are. And sometimes that takes a little bit of prioritization and triage, but we're meeting the requirements.
And thank you. And also, you mentioned something about you go out and you try to work with some of the owners around some of the grease pit. Do you always have the one that continue to push the system? There's a process in place where after so much, do we find them, if I have to keep working with them, or how does that work?
We do. We have an escalated system of, you know, of getting compliance. So, you know, we'll go out and say, okay, you need to do this, we're going to send you a correction notice, and then we can do a notice of violation, and we can move up to that, and they can be fined, and they can fall into those types of requirements if not getting their work done, but it's very rare.
Okay.
I mean, it does happen, but I really think that our people have, they really know how to go out and talk to people, they really know how to go out there and sell that this really will change their community and their water quality, and it's good for the community, and they work with them in such a way that they make them want to do the changes, and they explain to them, you don't have to have this huge expensive system in place, you know? Here, put this in instead. They really try to work with them and really explain why it's necessary, and we just don't have that very often, but it does happen. It's rare.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lormer. Thank you, Council President. I'm intrigued by the tree canopy program. Can you talk a little bit about, I mean, immediate question is, is that just on our public lands, or is that our tree canopy citywide?
It's, so the requirements are focused on city-owned and operated properties for us making any kind of policy changes or using different strategies to improve that or maintain it. They are having us look at overburdened communities, so we'll be mapping the overburdened communities and overlaying that with their tree canopy program too, to ensure that we're meeting their needs, and we're maintaining that tree canopy as well. So we'll be, we have staff that are going to be working with staff from vegetation and parks and planning to put a committee together to work on this program.
Fabulous. Great, thank you. Is there a timeline on that, Laura?
On the tree canopy program? Yes, there is, and I don't know it right offhand, but we have time to get that program implemented. I believe it's not until 2027, if I remember correctly, but I can get you the exact dates.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a question about the self-inspection program.
Yes.
So we're having them do the self-inspection, but is there also going to be like, we doing an inspection at certain points?
Yes. So what we're hoping is that through this program, they'll want to, they'll be more engaged with their system and take care of it better and use the proper BMPs, and then when we go out to inspect it, it should be in good condition. This will save our staff time on re-inspections and having to do correction letters and notices, because they should be in good condition when we get out there. And like I said, it's already supported by our code, so it's something that's already in place.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Fritcher.
Well, I just want to commend you on the work that the department does do. For instance, we were talking about spills and all, I know there was a reason spill, and because of those relationships that have been built, the company, instead of trying to hide it, they were upfront, called you, found out what we needed to do, and all was good. So the system was protected, so good job.
Yeah, we try to explain to them that if you have a spill, call us, we'll help you. We're not going to come out there and find you, we're going to come out and we're going to help you, make sure you get it cleaned up and prevent it from happening again. So they're not as afraid of us, you know? They're more willing to call us and ask for our help than be afraid to let us know that they had an accident, a spill happened. So, yeah, those relationships are being built, and our group loves doing this work. I just, the staff that I have working for me are, they're passionate about what they do, so they're very engaged with the public, and I love to see that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, with that, thank you so much, Laura. It's always great to hear from you. Thank you for your presentation, and with that, we are at the end of our meeting. We'll see you all at 7 o'clock for council meeting. We get our adjourned. Thank you.